This conference will now be recorded.
Hello, Byron.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, Chris, there you are.
I was wondering.
You was wondering.
I was wondering.
Oh.
The third day in the house.
Right. We can proceed. We can proceed.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's call this meeting the Sedalia City Council to order. Up first, we have the invocation that Chapel Matson will lead us in that. Then what we're going to do is we're going to invite up the Boy Scouts here that are from the local troop, and they're going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So with that, Chapel Matson, you have the floor to lead us in prayer.
Would you stand as able and join me in our invocation tonight? Dear Lord and Father of us all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as the Sedalia City Council, mayor, administrators, staff, and council members meet to hear about, discuss, and make decisions for the betterment of our community and its citizens. We're grateful for their service and dedication to our city. We ask your protection for all of our first responders who work 24/7 to serve and protect us often at their own peril. And tonight, we're honoring several who are receiving their lieutenant's badges for the fire department who are starting and continuing serving our great community. We are grateful for the United States of America, our constitutional republic, for which so many thousands have fought and died to create and preserve for nearly 250 years. Please bless, bless, and protect all military civilians serving our country today, here and throughout the world, keeping us safe from threats from out and sadly threats from within. We also ask your guidance in our decisions as we exercise our right to vote tomorrow, a freedom some other countries do not have. And tonight, we are also making the Curse of Fentanyl, a project in this destructive destruction of our community and its families. We ask the Lord to be with those families that have experienced this destruction firsthand and bless them. And now, as we leave tonight, please protect us and our loved ones, keep us from harm until we meet again, and all this we pray in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Now, if everybody could remain standing, we'll go ahead and invite the scouts up, join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Would you please follow me in the pledge of allegiance? My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So what troop are you from?
Sixty-one.
Sixty-one? Okay, very good. Okay, roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Alden.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Bliss.
Here.
Okay, on the, we have no one here to hold the service awards. Moving along to the retirement awards, up first, we have the Community Development Director, John Simmons. Can you go ahead and invite up Administrator Shaw to go ahead and present that retirement?
Well, I mean, I don't have a lot of prepared remarks, but I just wanted to thank you for your number of years of service with, it's obvious what you've helped develop here in the community and pushing it forward. Just appreciate all you've done for the community over the many years through all of the downtown development and historic development and retail recruitment, all of those kinds of things. Appreciate all you've done. Thank you. Thank you.
I'd just say a couple of words. It's been a great 18 years. I've had six mayors, six administrators, and probably 30-plus councilmen and women, and it's been an honor and a pleasure every moment, even the tough times are the good times here. So, thank you all. We're in capable hands with your new hire, my replacement, Sherry Lowry. Done to know her the past two weeks, and you're in good hands. So, it's been a pleasure. I'm still working in Sedalia. I'm over at the Parks Department now that there was my first day. It's probably a different atmosphere, and I'll keep working on historic preservation and maintaining the city. My heart's in the city, the state. Thank you all.
Okay, up next, we have, we'll go ahead and invite up, oh, Matthew, Assistant City Administrator Matthew Works, present the next, or no, I'm sorry, Justin Bray, to present the next retirement award.
Evening, everyone. George, you want to come up? All right, so George began his career 34 years with the city of Sedalia on April of 1990. He came in as a part-time laborer in the sanitation department on the back of the garbage truck. George went full-time, May 9th of 1990, and was later promoted to a motor equipment operator one in the street department, June of 1992. While working in the street department, George plowed snow, roadblocks, right-of-ways, repaired streets and patched potholes. Then in 1995, he was promoted to operator two in the sanitation department. He drove the garbage truck for 21 years until he volunteered to work at the materials management site. He gave eight years to the materials management site before he decided to retire. George has always been a service-minded person. He has had the attitude of what I can do for you. When working in the garbage, he would arrive by 4:00 a.m. to make coffee and Gatorade for the employees. During the cold winter months, he would make chili for everyone. Citizens would schedule their time for drop-off items at the materials management site when he was working because he was always the, he was always, I'm sorry, he always took the time to treat everyone with respect. He's not a person who likes idle time. He is a mover and a doer. He never sits still and takes pride in everything that he does. George will always be missed by the citizens and especially his coworkers. So on behalf of the city of Sedalia, the Public Works Department, I want to congratulate you on your term.
That's a hell of a run, boss.
Yeah.
Good for you.
Okay, for our next item, we have a Lieutenant Penions for the Sedalia Fire Department. We'll invite up Chief Irwin to go ahead and present that.
I apologize, I got the rowdy bunch in the back. Good evening, everybody. As a fire chief, these are probably the most exciting times for me. Tonight, we are recognizing six individuals. Unfortunately, one is out of town and was not able to attend this evening. Thank you for the opportunity to celebrate these promotions in front of you and in front of the public. With the implementation of the squads, there was a need to have an additional working supervisor for our fire engine. With this came the development of a lieutenant's position. This is the first time in the history of the fire department that we've actually had this position. We had nine very capable personnel apply for six positions. Candidates were tested on tallies, procedures, employee handbooks, SOGs, administrative orders, as well as each candidate had to complete a project assignment of their choosing. They spent a lot of time and a lot of energy studying and working on things. And all the competition for these six positions was highly competitive, and I am proud to say the six personnel standing in front of you have earned their respective promotions on a number of levels. Although one of the new promotions is out of town and could not attend here tonight, it is my honor to present to you this evening for their badge pinning and presentation of their new helmets, the gentleman standing in front of you. They will be have their badge pinned by members of their family, wives, significant others, family members of all that will be pinning their badges. For joining me, congratulating Alex Razamovski, Chris Maggert, I messed it up again, didn't I, Alex? Holby Snap, Matt Moulton, and Nathaniel Neville. With their badges, they also get a new helmet and collar brass.
Good job. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good job, boss. Congratulations. That's a hell of a mustache, L.P. Good for you. Cheers, sir. Congratulations, boss.
The next item on our agenda is the approval of the previous session minutes dated July 15th, 2024. Do I have a motion to second?
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion to second. Do I have any council discussion regarding the approval of these minutes? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. But next, we have the roll call of standing committees. First, we have Finance Administration. Carolyn Bogus, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, we have three items for consideration through the Finance and Administration Committee. Our first item is, we have encountered instances where we have arrested dealers of fentanyl only to have them take advantage of the prison bail requirements to get right back out on the street. They then sell more drugs to pay for a lawyer to string out the time, to even get them to a criminal trial in the circuit court system on the state charges. Many times, this takes a year or more. All the while, they continue to prey on our community with their criminal activities. Further, sometimes right before the final, have to go, have to go to trial, they simply skip town to continue evading justice for their crimes. Prosecutor Smith, with his vast experience in fighting these battles, came up with a way to help us fill the gap in the system. The concept is to create a municipal violation that can run parallel to the state charges. Municipal violations are much more limited on the maximum jail time that the judge can sentence them to, but still significant, while much more efficient in getting trials done quickly. Since the maximum sentence is much less than the state charges, we do not want to foregrow the more serious state charges. Yet, we do want to have something to fill the gap to stop these serious criminals from preying on our community much sooner than the time the state criminal system takes. The ordinance for your consideration will make it unlawful to have drug paraphernalia within the city of Sedalia. This will allow our police officers to arrest someone with fentanyl on state charge as well as arrest them for the paraphernalia that goes with it on municipal charges. The city prosecutor can then file charges on the municipal violation in municipal court, while at the same time, the county prosecutor can take the drugs themselves to the circuit court on the state charges. The suspect will then be allowed to seek bond on both the municipal and the state charges pending trial. However, the municipal court pocket moves much faster, and if convicted, can be sentenced up to 90 days in jail. This keeps the dealer off of the street for 90 days while the state criminal charges are awaiting trial. Part of the theory behind this approach is that drug dealers are in the business of making money, and if they're in jail, they cannot be making money. Similarly, while they are in jail, the buyers of the drugs will seek out other dealers so that they lose their addicted customers. This then makes the cost of dealing drugs in Sedalia much higher. In turn, they will enter, either find a legitimate way to make money or take their destructive behavior elsewhere. Prosecutor Smith has vetted this concept through a legal review of the statutes to make sure we are not violating double jeopardy laws as well as with the police chief and municipal judge. A discussion with Chair Anders and the county prosecutor took place as well on the merits of this approach. Each of these stakeholders expressed support for this approach to making it together with these criminals to prey upon our community. If we could, we have some that are here tonight to represent what they've been through with this fentanyl, and if you would like to stand and have something to say, please come to the podium at this time.
First, we'd like to recognize Susan Howe, the podium, to go ahead and speak regarding this.
Thank you very much. My name is, can you hear this on the mic? Is this okay? All right. My name is Suzie Howe, and I am the mom of Jacob Howe. We lost Jacob due to fentanyl poisoning four years ago yesterday, and it doesn't get any easier. Four years ago feels like just yesterday to me. Jacob is only 16. And in here with me is Al Young, and we lost Jacob four days after he lost his son Garrett. And both of our boys were regular teenagers. They were fun-loving. They loved excitement. They loved riding dirt bikes. They loved cars. They loved hanging out with their friends. They weren't typical, you know, drug users. They weren't, you know, addicted. They were just regular teenagers that loved life, loved having fun. They were outgoing kids. So I tell you that story because if you would know them, it was, it could happen to any one of the teenagers or any young adult that you know in Sedalia, which is why I think it's so important that you pass this ordinance to protect our young teens and our, and our community. In the last three years, there had been approximately 14 deaths in Sedalia due to fentanyl. Thankfully, many deaths were prevented because Narcan was given. Narcan is the little nasal spray that someone can administer. You put it in their nose, and it stops the reaction in the brain and prevents the opioids from reacting in your brain. And the year that Jacob passed, the school year, I was unable to continue teaching. So Erica Elliott and I went to Smith Cotton and Whittier Schools and educated the students about fentanyl, which many of the kids had not heard about. We educated students about what Narcan was, which many of the students did not know about. And that was free. You could get it at Pettis County Health. So, if, you know, many of the students didn't know any of the information that we were talking about, nor did our son Jacob or Alan's son Garrett. So, we can talk to our students and we can talk to our kids about the dangers of fentanyl, and is that enough? No, it's not enough. Is it saving our youth? No. We can tell them about, about Narcan and how to prevent an overdose of a friend or somebody at a party or somebody with them, how they can help a friend. And is that enough? No, it's not. We can educate our community and have programs like DARE. Is that enough? No, it's not enough, because kids are still dying in our community. So, but what you can do is to vote to pass this fentanyl ordinance to help protect our teenagers and our community from the dangers of fentanyl and any more deaths for our young people and any more of our community members. So I pray that no parent has to go through what the pain and heartache that Alan and I have gone through and our families have gone through by losing our children to fentanyl poisoning. So I urge you to vote yes on this ordinance. Thank you.
Now, we'd like to invite up Chief Woolery to go ahead and say a few words regarding the enforcement of this order.
Good evening, council. As you all know, fentanyl is a synthetic opioid that is extremely potent. It's more potent than heroin, morphine, by about 100 times. It's more potent than about anything else on the street. It's readily available. It comes freely across the border. A lot of it comes from Mexico, majority of it comes from Mexico, and gets pressed. And it takes a very miniscule amount to be a fatal amount. About three milligrams can be fatal and will likely be fatal. And the process of fentanyl that's made, when it's made into pills, is by no means scientific. It's mixed, and the people making this have no idea how much fentanyl is in this pill or this pill. It's, it's just random on how that is. Typically, what we see is the fentanyl is typically in pill form. It started out in Perk-30s. It is now changed to where they're pressed into Xanax and just nondescript white pills. So many of our overdoses, the people involved don't even know that they have fentanyl. They think that they're getting Percocet or Xanax or something that is far less dangerous than what fentanyl is. It, so far this year, we have had 17 overdoses, and it took two days before an officer needed to use Narcan on somebody. So on January 2nd was our first Narcan administration of 2024. So it is definitely a significant problem. I'm very excited about this ordinance because it's a complete paradigm shift. When I started in 1995, my understanding that I was taught is, on the same incident, you cannot have city charges and state charges. So if I stop somebody for speeding and they're intoxicated and it's their second or third DWI, I would go state charges. I would also have to request state charges on the speeding because I could not write them a speeding ticket out of Sedalia and then charge them in state court. So, when Todd got this to go through and actually taught us this is not double jeopardy, that we can do this, this is exciting, because if we arrest somebody who is trafficking fentanyl and the paraphernalia that they have, if we can put them in jail for several months while they're waiting trial on state charges, that is a, that is a big victory for Sedalia, and that's good for our citizens. So I'm definitely behind it.
Thank you. Yes, Chief. We'll now invite up Assistant City Prosecutor Todd Smith to go ahead and speak for this matter.
Ladies and gentlemen, as you know, I was a drug task force prosecutor for many years. Councilman Bogus hit upon it, but the thing that I learned after prosecuting this, this is about money. Folks are selling this. They're merchants of death, and the way to prevent that death is to make it less attractive to sell that pill, and that's what this does. You will go to jail quicker and longer and lose business and lose support while you sit in jail and figure out what lunch tastes like in jail. That's what I want to do with this. I know it seems like a small gesture, but I think if it can stop even one pill, it is definitely worth our trouble. Thank you very much for your consideration.
All right, so with that, we'll go ahead and call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill Number 2024-134. An ordinance of the city of Sedalia, Missouri to prohibit unlawful use of drug paraphernalia with fentanyl.
Second. I have a motion to second for second reading. Does council have any discussion regarding the ordinance?
Yes, I was surprised and impressed by the Pettis County Health Department that were giving out Narcan at an ice cream social I went to the other night. I was not expecting that. I think it's a wonderful way to meet, to get that in the hands of a lot of, a diverse group of people.
Anyone else? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes?
Bill Number 2024-134. An ordinance of the city of Sedalia, Missouri to prohibit unlawful use of drug paraphernalia with fentanyl.
I have a motion to second.
I have a motion to second for final passage. Having the motion for final passage came from everybody, which is unusual. Any council discussion regarding this? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Marshall.
Absolutely, yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Big yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Alden.
Yes.
All in favor?
All right, very good. Much passed. Thank you, council.
For our second item tonight, this is a budget amendment for the embassy of $50,000. At our last meeting, the chairperson and the executive director from the embassy organization provided a presentation about their mission and then made a request for the use of some of the restricted funds the city is receiving from the opioid settlement. So that's what our second item is regarding.
Very good. All right, call for the reading. We have a resolution and ordinance in relation to this. We'll go ahead and start with the resolution. Call for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution 2099. A resolution of the City Council of the city of Sedalia, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year 2025.
To approve?
Second.
I have a motion to second to approve. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. We will now call for the reading of the ordinance in relation to this pledge of allegiance.
Bill Number 2024-135. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 regarding embassy funding.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2024-135. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 regarding embassy funding.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of the bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Alden.
Yes.
Marshall. Yes. All in favor?
Our final item tonight is the redevelopment proposal support of Liberty and Tambole Apartments. The owners of Liberty and Tambole Apartments on Liberty Park Boulevard have put together a plan to rehabilitate these units. They are making an application for tax credit through the Missouri Housing Development Commission to help finance the project. A resolution by council supporting the application is being requested for their application.
Have the representative from Liberty and Tambole Apartments here to go ahead and give a presentation?
There's a remote pointer there if you want to go through that.
There's a remote pointer there if you, uh, want to go through that. Good evening, everyone. Andrew Bowling and I'm with, uh, RCH Development and I have Lisa Braverman here with me as well. She's with, uh, Liberty and Tambo, uh, the current nonprofit owner. So really liked the momentum you guys got going. Let's, let's keep that rolling. Um, we're back again. We, we had your support last year for our application. It did not get funded, um, but we've done some retooling and we feel like we'll be a lot more competitive this year. I have a little slideshow. I'll just kind of run through it briefly. I know you have the full agenda and I want to be respectful of your time. So this is a little bit about our experience. We've done, uh, over sixty-two tax credit awards from HDC. There is a large demand for these deals and they're competitive. And if we can get your support, it helps us to compete better against our competition. So this is kind of what we do. Put together these applications, get them before MHD C and, and have a good track record of getting approved. Um, the reason this is important is because we're, if we're able to use this resource, we can lower the debt load on these projects and keep the rents down. This particular project has a hundred percent project based section eight contract. So the tenants pay thirty percent of their, uh, their, their adjusted, their immediate income, um, on an annual basis. So it, their rent won't be impacted by this transaction, but it will be preserved so that they can stay paying that lower rate. Kind of touched on that and the income limit. Um, there will be a hundred, a hundred and thirty applications this year. Last year there were twenty-two awarded. So, um, the more support we can get, the, the more competitive we'll be. They're due in September and here's a few examples of what we did, what we've done in the past. So these are all rehab projects similar to Liberty and Tambo. That's a few. So as you can see, we, we put a lot of money in there. We're going to spend somewhere around eighty to eighty-five thousand a unit and a full renovation. So pretty much down to the drywall. And there's where it's located, you all probably know. And here's, here's a little schematic floor plan and we really appreciate your support. I'll answer any questions you have. We appreciate your support last year. Appreciate the staff for having, having us getting to this point and, and helping us along the way.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Bowling? Thank you, Mr. Bowling.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now call for the reading of the resolution in relation to this matter.
Resolution twenty-one hundred. A resolution of support for the proposal from RCH Development LLC for the redevelopment of Liberty and Tambo Apartments located at fourteen hundred Liberty Park Boulevard in the city of today of Missouri.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second. Do you have any council discussion regarding this resolution?
If, if I could just point out, the, the resolution was changed from what was in your package. So, uh, the resolution is on here. Um, there was a, you know, difference in the ownership, so it's, it's different than what's in your packet, but it's essentially the same thing.
Very good. Any further council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passed. All right, thank you, Carolyn Murlock. And next we have Public Works Chairman Hiller, you have the floor.
It's been a busy two weeks. Uh, we've got fifteen items on the agenda tonight. Um, as we have been discussing, the city's under an abatement order of consistent with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources to bring the city sewer treatment plants up to current standard. Due to the size of the complexity of this project, staff recommend utilizing an owner's agent to represent the city's best interest as we sort through the various options that we will provide the best service to the citizens, which will lead to the next generation. In accordance with the state statutes, SRS guidelines and the city policies, staff went through a process to review interested firms, qualifications to determine who would be the best positioned to serve in this capacity. HCR Incorporated was determined to be the most qualified respondent to our request for qualifications. Staff worked with them to negotiate an agreement for the first phase of this path and in April, the agreement in the amount of seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and two dollars was approved. We're nearing the end of this phase, one, one effects of this contract. And in order to move forward with the next phase without delay, staff negotiated a scope of work for phase two. The services for this phase will get us through the process, design and procurement of construction at a cost of a hundred and six thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. They recommend approval of adding this phase to the agreement.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one thirty-six. An ordinance authorizing amendment one to the owner agent agreement for engineering services for the city's north and central wastewater treatment plants.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion to second for the second reading. Do you have any council discussion regarding this bill? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one thirty-six. An ordinance authorizing amendment one to the owner agent agreement for engineering services for the city's north and central wastewater treatment plants.
Final passage. Second.
I have a motion to second for the final passage of this bill. Do you have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
All in favor.
Motion passed.
Second. In twenty twenty-two, the city was successful in obtaining a grant through the American Rescue Plan, the ARPA Plan Act for storm water improvements. We need, these projects were part of the master plan developed a few years ago. As part of the planning process, the engineering was completed, which made our grant application more competitive over others and thereby successful. Once away projects forbid the total of all bids awarded with five hundred and thirty-five thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars fifteen cents below the total grant award. In working with the granting agency, additional options have been identified to utilize the rest of these available funds for the improvement in storm damage in the project areas. In order to receive approval from the Missouri Department of Natural Resources as a granting agency, these improvements have to be related to one of the projects already approved and to be in addition to the project's scope rather than a complete redesign or another area entirely. One such option that has been approved through the MDNR is the area of Liberty Park. This addition will allow us to widen the paved area of Liberty Park Boulevard, add curbing and more storm piping. Where the pavement is widened, we will be able to add angle parking to significantly increase the much-needed parking in for access to Liberty Park. We recommend a change order in the amount of three hundred and ninety-one thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars, which is going to come from that old run of utility money that we have and it's available through the grant funds of this work.
All right, call for the reading, speaking of the ordinance approving and accepting the change order.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one thirty-seven. An ordinance approving and accepting change order number one for storm drainage improvements project area number eight.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion to second for the second reading of this bill. Do you have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one thirty-seven. An ordinance approving and accepting change order number one for storm drainage improvements project area number eight.
Final passage. Second.
I have a motion to second for the final passage of this bill. Do you have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
All in favor.
Motion passed.
The third item is as discussed on the last again item, we were, we are working to utilize available grants to make more storm water improvements. Another option approved from, through the MDNR is the area of Thirteenth Street and Beacon Avenue. This addition was replacing pipes that is falling and increased its size to handle the larger rainy events. Uh, allocating sixty-seven thousand two hundred and forty dollars and thirty-one cents of these grant funds to this project.
All right, call for the reading of the ordinance approving and accepting change order number one.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one thirty-eight. An ordinance approving and accepting change order number one for storm drainage improvements project area number thirty-five.
Second reading. Second.
I have a motion to second for the second reading of this ordinance. Do you have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one thirty-eight. An ordinance approving and accepting change order number one for storm drains improvements project area number thirty-five.
Final passage. Second.
I have a motion to second for the final passage of this bill. Do you have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
All in favor.
Continuing with change orders to make additional storm water improvements, staff has identified a need to modify the project in the area of Center Avenue and Broadway Boulevard. The cost of this change is four thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars twenty-five cents and staff recommends approval of this change order.
Okay. Call for the reading of the change order.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one thirty-nine. An ordinance in improvement and accepting change order number two for storm drainage improvements project area number fourteen.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion to second for the second reading of this bill. Do you have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passed.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one thirty-nine. An ordinance approving and accepting change order number two for storm drainage improvements project area number fourteen.
Final passage. Second.
I have a motion to second for the final passage of this bill. Do you have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
All in favor.
In connection with the storm water improvement project in the area of Fourteenth Street, Sneed Avenue and Park Avenue, staff has worked with the MDNR to get approval for the use of grant funding to replace sidewalks after the storm pipe is installed. This change will result in eleven thousand eight hundred and seventy square feet of sidewalk replacement at a cost of forty-four thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars ninety-eight cents.
All right, call for the ordinance approving and accepting change order number one for improvements to project area twenty.
Bill number twen-, bill number twenty twenty-four, one forty. An ordinance in improvement and accepting change order number one for storm drainage improvements project area number twenty-eight.
Second reading. Second.
I have a motion to second for the second reading of this bill. Do you have any council discussion regarding the bill approving the change order? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one forty. An ordinance approving and accepting change order number one for storm drainage improvements project area number twenty-eight.
Final passage. Second.
I have a motion to second regarding the final passage of this bill. Do you have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
All in favor.
My sixth item, during this strategic planning and budget process, staff presented the need to replace a nineteen ninety-eight truck and a fleet that has extended its useful life and has a broken frame. Council prioritized this item as a number two out of seven incentive scored for transportation funding. With this level of, of prioritization, three hundred and fifty thousand was included in the adapted budget. Staff located a dump body truck with plow and spreader under the state cooperation procurement contract for two hundred and ninety-seven thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars, which will meet our needs and is five fifty-two thousand four fifty-nine under the budget.
All right, call for the reading of the ordinance approving and accepting the quote for the dump truck.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one forty-one. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of a dump truck plow and spreader.
Second reading. Second.
I have a motion to second for the second reading of this bill. Do you have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one forty-one. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of a dump truck plow and spreader.
Final passage. Second.
I have a motion to second for the final passage of this bill. Do you have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
All in favor.
All right, motion passed.
As discussed in December, the strategic plan included a, the need to replace garbage trucks that are at the end of their useful lives. At that time, we reported that we were experiencing equipment failure at a rate that was impeding our ability to keep trash picked up. We had so many failures at the same time that we had to have public crews, work crews pick up trash with loaders and dump trucks, which is inefficient to say the least. Likewise, the repair cost to keep old trucks operational even part of the time was excessive in consuming our fleet maintenance resources. Therefore, council proved the accelerated proposal to move for more with some of the needed replacements. The current operations require four side loading motors and two rear loading trucks. The number allows for one of each type to be in reserve to rotate as them needed when others are down for maintenance or repairs. When we entered into a lease purchase agreement five years ago for the side loaders, the intent was that these trucks had not an expected useful life in excess of seven years. This would allow us to start purchasing replacements one at a time at the end of five-year, uh, This would allow us to start purchasing replacements one at a time at the end of five year, uh, rotations so that we could chase replacements at one at a time. Wait a minute, I'm sorry. Get, get them spread out on a rotational replacement schedule. However, these trucks have been proven to be undersized for our needs and therefore have not lasted as long as they were supposed to. Anticipated, staff researched and identified heavier trucks that are more suitable to the usage that we put them through. Another part of the problem though is that the sanitation fund does not have significant funds to offset this level of purchase. Therefore, rather than going externally to borrow the funds to, or enter into a leasing agreement, council approved a loan from the general fund to cover the purchase of two new trucks. The general fund having sufficient reserves was able to cover this without unduly putting into jeopardy the financial stability of the city even when considering rotations in the economy or the ability to react to disasters. The rest of the plan was then to keep one of these, of the three old trucks in a daily service and keep the other two for backup. Our hope was that out of these three, we could keep one running. Then next fiscal, fiscal year, we could purchase another new unit size better for our use. Since then, this has become a problematic to keep even one of these old trucks going. When reviewing the situation with the Public Works Council Committee last month, the committee directed staff to bring forward a budget amendment to go forward now with their third replacement vehicle and get rid of the old trucks altogether. Staff has loca- located another such truck and negotiated trade-in on all three of the old trucks on one of the new replacements. The cost of the new truck is three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred dollars, and they will allow a hundred thousand, five hundred dollars trade-in, which I think is a great deal, in value for these three old trucks. Staff recommends approval of the budget amendment and purchase of the new refuse truck utilizing the loan of the general fund. I just want to add, I was the one that kind of suggested this because I personally know the rotation of the vehicles is very important. Uh, these trucks are breaking down, they're, they've, they've got one truck, they've robbed everything off of, that they can rob off of to keep, try to keep one running and when one's down, it's just a, it's, it's just falling apart, okay? So, this, I think this is a good deal.
I have a point of information for Superintendent Bray, has this cut down on the trips to the dump that, that gives a larger capacity?
Uh, yes, sir, it has, uh, by about half.
Half, okay.
Um, also fuel savings as well, um, not having as many trips going to the landfill, um, bigger capacity, just more saving money all the way around with the two of those trucks.
Are the, are the, on the side loading arm, is that a smoother mechanism than what we've had before?
Uh, yes, sir, um, not only is it smoother, it actually has a further reach, so it has a twelve foot reach instead of the older trucks are six foot, the seven foot. Um, it also has a heavier lifting capacity, so some of the issues that we were having with dumping trash in the past are no longer an issue where, um, the newer trucks are a thousand pounds, or older trucks are maybe three hundred pounds. Um, so overloaded cans, we're not really having the issues on those routes anymore, as well as, you know, um, being able to reach them as well, so.
Very good, so you get less spillage.
Yes, sir.
I have, I have a question, uh, back when these trucks were purchased, uh, did Elliot Equipment Company, uh, try to explain that these, these trucks weren't capable of doing the job that they were undersized?
We didn't purchase these, the older trucks from Elliot Equipment.
No, the, the new ones.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding.
It was here five years ago.
Yes, the, the trucks that we purchased five years ago, we did not purchase those from Elliot Equipment, we purchased those from Nuff's Truck out of Kansas City.
Well, it says that they, uh, they were undersized for our needs, I just wondered if Elliot Equipment Company tried to tell us that, and, and, and try to sell us a bigger.
I, I wasn't involved with the purchasing of the trucks at the time, but.
I think from committee, if I remember right, Justin, that you said that the trucks that we purchased five years ago were for a smaller, much smaller community.
Yes, they're, they're designed for much smaller routes, um, also more, more designed for recycling, um, and with the, just the sheer amount of trash that we're picking up every day, um, they're just, the single axle trucks are just not designed to handle this, just the sheer amount of weight.
I think I have any other questions? I just want to add, Andy, sometimes a good deal is not a good deal, and that's the case in these trucks that were purchased five years ago, none of us had anything to do with it, but now we're trying to get the equipment suitable for this community.
Very good, alright, we have a resolution and two ordinances in relation to this budget amendment, we'll start with the resolution, call for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution twenty-one oh-one, a resolution to the City Council of the City of Soudae, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Second reading.
I have a motion to second for approval of this resolution, do I have any council discussion regarding the resolution? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. We'll now call for the reading of the first ordinance in relation to this matter, amending the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one forty-two, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five regarding sanitation, side load, refuse truck purchase.
Second reading, second.
I have a motion to second for the second reading of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one forty-two, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five regarding sanitation, side load, refuse truck purchase.
Final passage, second.
I have a motion to second for the final passage of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, roll call please.
Marshall.
Yes.
August.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
All in favor.
Alright, motion passes. Now we'll call for the reading of the second ordinance in relation to this matter, this is the ordinance approving and accepting the quote.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one forty-three, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of a side load refuse truck.
Second reading, second.
I have a motion to second for the second reading of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one forty-three, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of a side loads refuse truck.
Final passage, second.
I have a motion to second for the final passage of this bill, do I have any council discussion regarding it? Have you heard none, roll call please.
August.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
All in favor.
Okay, the eighth item I got is for the last few years, the city's requiring properties outside of the city limit that wanted to hook up to the city water and sewer that they would have to agree to annex at such time to the property becoming contagious. Zachariah Isotta, I believe that's how you pronounce that, owns property at fourteen twenty Timber Ridge Drive and wishes to connect to the city water utility. Therefore, staff has negotiated an annexation and an agreement and recommends approval.
Alright, now I call for the reading of the ordinance authorizing the annexation and utility service agreement.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one forty-four, an ordinance authorizing an annexation utility services agreement for connection to property located at fourteen twenty Timber Ridge Drive to the city of Soudae's water distribution system.
Second reading, second.
I have a motion to second for the second reading of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one forty-four, an ordinance authorizing an annexation and utility services agreement for connection to property located at fourteen twenty Timber Ridge Drive to the city of Soudae's water distribution system.
Final passage, second.
I have a motion to second for the final passage of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, roll call please.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
August.
Yes.
All in favor.
Ninth item, my, ninth item we have, like the last agenda item, Herman and, and Deborah Collier own property twenty-six eighty-five James Lane in which to connect the city to the water utility. Therefore, staff has negotiated an annexation agreement and recommends approval.
Okay, I'm going to call for the reading of the ordinance authorizing the annexation and utility service agreement.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one forty-five, an ordinance authorizing an annexation utility services agreement for connection to property located at twenty-six eighty-five James Lane to the city of Soudae's water distribution system.
Second reading, second.
I have a motion to second for the second reading of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one forty-five, an ordinance authorizing an annexation utility services agreement for connection to property located at twenty-six eighty-five James Lane to the city of Soudae's water distribution system.
Final passage, second.
I have a motion to second for the final passage of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, roll call please.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
August.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
All in favor.
Motion passes.
Tenth item tonight is during the special work session on July the ninth, council drafted a phase plan as recommended by staff and engineering consultants to get the Weston Street Bridge back in operation. The first phase of the plan was implemented right away to get the bridge open to northbound traffic only. The next part of the plan included purchasing portable traffic signal equipment to allow for two-way traffic on only one lane of the bridge. The lights would be green for northbound traffic and red for southbound until the system sensors identify an automobile wanting to go south across the bridge. The lights would be then changed to red for northbound and green for southbound until the southbound traffic gets cleared. The system of lights that has been sourced and staff recommends purchase from J A Traffic Products for fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars, twenty-six cents.
Okay, in regards to this matter, we have a resolution and two ordinances as it is a budget amendment. We're going to start with the resolution first, call for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution twenty-one oh-two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Soudae, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve, second, I have a motion to approve in a second, do I have any council discussion regarding this resolution?
I have a question, um, I, have we received the two hundred thousand dollars from the county yet to go towards this project?
I do not believe so.
No, I do not believe so, we did, um, meet with county commissioners, oh goodness, um, first part of July, I believe, and, um, and they talked about that they would likely have to carry that over till next year, uh, for the, because it was intended for the construction repairs.
Thank you, Paul.
Any other council discussion?
Uh, my question is, does this amount of money include installation or everything, or just like the cell?
They, they are portable lights, so yeah, that, it's, uh, it's my understanding they'll, they'll be set up, but then we went with portable lights so that, uh, um, when we get the bridge repaired, then we'll be able to use them elsewhere, um, for traffic control for, um, if we have, um, those are street repairs, we can use them to, uh, um, to stop, you know, like when we were working on Main Street. Yeah, they would have been very handy for that.
Any idea, do you have a timeline?
Uh, Matthew, do you remember timeline?
Eight weeks.
Eight weeks, thank you.
There you go. Any other council discussion regarding the resolution? Alright, have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Next we have the first ordinance in relation to this matter, this is the ordinance amending the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, I'd call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one forty-six, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five regarding street light signals purchase.
Second reading, second.
I have a motion to second for the second reading of this ordinance, do I have any council discussion regarding it? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one forty-six, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five regarding street light signals purchase.
Final passage, second.
I have a motion to second for the final passage of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, roll call please.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
August.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
All in favor.
Alright, motion passes. Next we'll call for the second reading, or the, uh, the reading of the second ordinance in relation to this matter, this is the ordinance approving and accepting the quote of the purchase of these lights, I'll go and call that reading.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one forty-seven, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of two four-way portable signals.
Second reading, second.
Any council discussion regarding the second reading of this bill? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one forty-seven, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of two four-way portable signals.
Final passage, second.
I have a motion to second for the final passage of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, roll call please.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
August.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
All in favor.
Motion passes.
Next we had a, the ci- city has for several years now collected tree limbs and other yard waste materials management site, then once a, or twice a year, a contractor brings in a large grinder to turn this debris into mulch. Much of this mulch is then used in the composting operation as a byproduct of the sewer treatment operation. The sewer sludge that comes out of the sewer becomes mixed with the tree mulch and the biological process breaks down the materials and turns the mix into compost. The com- this compost is then used by farmers, gardeners, landscapers as a fertilizer. By doing this, the city receives several benefits, first it provides an economical way to keep the yard debris picked up, second it recycles the yard waste into usable products as, as either mulch or compost. Further, if not, for being able to recycle the sewer sludge, the, the rate pairs would incur more cost to properly, properly dispose of their, this waste. Finally, the tax pairs and sewer tax, taxpayers are able to recover some of the costs of this project from selling these byproducts. Staff has bid out the grinding and received three bids, the low bid was from Hampton's Tree Service at thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars, which is under the annual budget leaving room if needed for later in the year. Hampton Tree Service has performed these services well for the city before, so staff recommends their approval.
Alright, call for the reading of the ordinance authorizing the agreement.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one forty-eight, an ordinance authorizing agreement for yard waste grinding.
Second reading, second.
I have a motion to second regarding the, uh, second reading of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one forty-eight, an ordinance authorizing agreement for yard waste grinding.
Final passage, second.
I have a motion to second for the final passage of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, roll call please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
August.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
All in favor.
Motion passes.
Number twelve, we're getting towards the end, the city has been working on a project that extends sewer to wire company. The project was designed and let out for bidding May, however, no bids were received. Staff consulted with the engineers and potential contractors to determine why we do not generate interest in bidding this project. It was determined that a redesign is necessary to make the main extension easier to construct. Staff has worked with engineering surveys and services on a scope of work to complete such a modification to the design. And recommends approval of the change order to this contract of forty thousand, six hundred dollars for design and construction management services.
Okay, call for the reading of the ordinance, uh, authorizing task order number three A.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one forty-nine, an ordinance authorizing task order number three A for small sanitary sewer project A.
Second reading, second.
I have a motion to second for the second reading of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one forty-nine, an ordinance authorizing task order number three A for small sanitary sewer project A.
Final passage, second.
I have a motion to second for the final passage of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, roll call please.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
August.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
All in favor.
During the budgeting process, staff proposed to council approve allocating sixty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of another used day cab truck for use in pulling fifth wheel trailers. The Public Works Division utilized different styles of trailers for various functions. The low bowling trailer is used to move large equipment such as a paving machine. An end dump trailer is used to haul larger loads of agri- agri- uh, of rock salt such as when bringing it in from a larger distance away. A sit-down flatbed trailer is used to haul other equipment such as backhoes or skid steers. These trailers are also used to haul things like the concrete barriers when setting up security for prays or blocking off streets. Having only one such truck capable of pulling these trailers makes the operation less efficient and flexible. Therefore, adding another truck was proposed and budgeted. Staff located a good used truck for this purpose well under the budgeted amount. The dealer that has the truck also has another almost identical truck and has offered a discount as we purchased both, if we purchased both. With the discount, the two trucks can be purchased for the budgeted amount, so buy, perhaps you buy one, get one free. Having three of these trucks would make the operation significantly more efficient as well as safe. When hauling equipment to job sites now, we often pushing the limits on the current equipment capabilities. Using the right equipment that is designed to haul these loads is much safer. Therefore, staff recommends pushing, purchasing both of these used day cab trucks at total cost of sixty-five thousand dollars. And I just want to add, talking to just, Justin, that we actually have nine drivers that are licensed, C D L, to drive, be capable of driving these trucks, so, uh, we're not going to have to go out and, you know, I'm sure he's going to work on his guys, more guys to get licensed too, so we appreciate what you're doing for us, Justin, thank you.
Alright, call for the reading of the ordinance, uh, approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of these day cab trucks.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one fifty, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of two day cab trucks.
Second reading, second.
I have a motion to second for the second reading of this bill, do I have any council discussion regarding it? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty-four, one fifty, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of two day, two day cab trucks.
Final passage, second.
I have a motion to second regarding the final passage of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, roll call please.
Marshall.
Yes.
August.
Yes.
Hiller. Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
All in favor.
Motion passed.
With the current project to upgrade the central wastewater treatment plant, a major piece of the improvement is replacing it and upgrading the blowers. The essential function to the process is to pump air through the sewers to facilitate the biological breakdown of the solids in the wastewater. While designing this upgrade, staff worked with engineers to standardize the blower equipment. By using standardizing the blowers, our staff can operate and maintain them more efficiently. After careful consideration, it was decided to move away from the current positive displacement of style blowers to turbo style blowers. The turbo blowers have fewer moving parts, making them more reliable and easier to maintain. Also, the style blowers selected includes permanent magnets in the place of bearings or bushings. This makes them more efficient, energy efficient by eliminating friction while also removing parts that need maintained and wear out. The information was presented to the council before approval of the purchase of this equipment was made for the central plant. Now the blowers in the southeast treatment plant are failing. This plant two currently utilizes positive displacement style blowers. The current design has three units and is designed to rotate use so that we always have one or two units being held in reserve. In April, one of those units went down. As we were trying to repair this unit, we learned that the company that manufactured these blowers was sold and a new owner has discontinued these models and further quit making parts for them. To having two units running, staff did not get alarmed and plan on building into the next budget, the replacement for the spare unit. However, since then, another unit failed. We were able to rob parts off the other town until to get, the other down until, uh, unit, to get this unit back up. Then a third unit also failed, leaving us with no parts to salvage to keep at least one blower going at all times. We were able to rent a portable unit to keep the plant going. However, that leaves us with less inefficient operations and no reliable backup. Staff worked with the supplier of the blowers, selected the central plant to provide a model that fits the needs of the southeast plant. They were able to provide specifications for a unit that is, is the same model but less horsepower. Staff recommends purchasing two turbo style blowers for the southeast plant. Staff will continue to research for the best solution to provide the added backup protection for the blower system. This may be a portable unit that can serve as a backup to multiple plants. Staff will bring that recommendation back in council later date. FTC Equipment is the sole provider for these units in this region and has quoted $370,920 for the two units.
Okay, we have a resolution in two ordinances in relation to this matter because it is a budget amendment. Go ahead and call for the reading of the resolution first.
Resolution 2103. A resolution of the City Council of City Sedalia, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year 2025.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second regarding this resolution. Do I have any council discussion or question? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. We'll now call for the reading of the ordinance amending the budget for fiscal year 2024-2025.
Bill number 2024-151. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 regarding WPC blower purchases.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion to second reading, uh, a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-151. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 regarding WPC blower purchases.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion to second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, roll call please.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
All in favor.
All right, now we'll go ahead and call for the reading of the ordinance approving and accepting the quote of the purchase.
Bill number 2024-152. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of two turbo blowers for the southeast wastewater treatment plant.
Final passage, uh, second reading.
Second.
I have a motion to second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-152. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of two turbo blowers for the southeast wastewater treatment plant.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion to second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, roll call please.
Hiller.
Yep.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
All in favor.
Finally, this does not incur any money. During the good and welfare portion of the last meeting, Carla Jackson came forward to express her concerns about the placement of fiber junction boxes in front of her residence. She reported that another fiber provider was in the process of placing the third junction box right in front of her house. They forced was recently removed but still has condu sticking up. She also was also informed there was a possibility of two more companies coming to town. She indicated she reached out to staff and her councilmen. And while they were all curious and working to help resolve this, they indicated that the city was limited in their powers to regulate utilities using the right of way. She requested the council take whatever action they could as quickly as possible to limit the number of junction boxes that could be placed in front of one property. Since that being, our legal status performed, performed a more extensive research of the state statutes and federal regulations that limit the city's ability to affect this matter in relationship to our current right-of-way management codes. While the state and federal language is not fully state, we can dictate placement or style of these facilities. It does provide some room for us to manage the use of the right of way as long as our ordinances are reasonable and do not create an unfair advantage to one provider over another. Among the other limitations. Per se, to this research, our legal counsel has carefully tracked the language to fit within the limitations that when applied, will serve to limit the death density of above ground or flush mounted junction boxes. Further, will discourage the placement of boxes in the middle of properties by increasing landscaping requirements to conform with the surrounding areas. Specifically, the ordinance will require junction boxes to be at least 75 feet apart and within 10 feet of the property line. It is not practical to be within 10 feet of the property line. Then the provider may be required to put in reasonable landscaping to hide the junction boxes. Staff recommends approval of this amendment to the right-of-way management codes. We're also happy to report that the provider that had put the third box right in front of Mrs. Jackson's house did the right thing and moved the box.
All right, and ordinance in relation to this matter, we're going to call for the ordinance amending section 5050 of our Code of Ordinances of City Sedalia.
Resolution, um, bill number 2024-153. An ordinance amending section 5050 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sedalia, Missouri relating to the denial of an application for a right-of-way permit.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion to second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-153. An ordinance amending section 5050 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sedalia, Missouri relating to the denial of an application for a right-of-way permit.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion to second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Have you heard none, roll call please?
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
All in favor.
That's all I've got. Thank you Chairman Hiller. All right, I'm going to go and move us along to the, uh, liquor licenses. That's further down in our agenda as we have nothing further regarding that. We'll go ahead and call for the reading of liquor licenses.
We have one new license and eight renewals tonight. New license for Kristy Long doing business with Wildlife Ridge Winery at 34751 Mello Road, Smithville, Missouri. Our special event license for Sedalia Chamber Piccadilly on September 26, 2024 at The Foundry. And renewals for Steven Swafford doing businesses, grow themselves and service at 1510 West Henry for wholesale liquor and wholesale beer. Doug Bennett's doing businesses Liberty Center Association at 111 West Smith for liquor by the drink. Virginia K. Jones doing businesses Primetime Number Three at 216 West Broadway for packaged liquor and Sunday sales. Virginia K. Jones doing businesses Primetime Fabatrie, 707 East 24th, packaged liquor and Sunday sales. Charles Wanting doing business with Shea Win at 121 East Third for liquor by-
Point of order. Mr. Wanting, I believe, deceased. I believe this may be his son.
Might be his son. All right. Correct.
Continue. Um, Kathy Geddes doing businesses Break Time Number 3167 at 101 Rebar Road for packaged liquor and Sunday sales. Chancy Sherman doing businesses Chances Are 303 South Lamine for liquor by the drink, Sunday sales and sidewalk consumption. And Eric Brown doing businesses Buffalo Wild Wings at 4401 Wisconsin Avenue for liquor by the drink and Sunday sales.
Motion to approve and block?
Second.
I have a motion to second to approve and block. Do I have any council discussion regarding these? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving along, we have any miscellaneous items from the city council or city administrator?
I'd just like to thank the scouts for coming here tonight. If we can't call you boy scouts or girl scouts anymore, all right, I'm just scouts. You guys you know are going to be the future leaders of Sedalia. Whether you choose to be the mayor, city administrator, city council, police officer, or firefighter. Hang in there.
To our mayor and to, uh, city council, this coming Thursday at Buffalo Hospital, there will be a recognition of Ms. Loretta Emerson, who was at one time a second ward city council person for her lifelong, uh, achievements. And so we're inviting you to Buffalo Hospital on Thursday at 1:30 to recognize her.
Very good. Anyone else?
Um, I'd like to just, um, uh, first of all, make introductions and welcome to, um, Sherry Lowery. She's our new community development director. And then Chris Franklin is our new IT manager. Um, you know, they both come to us with, uh, great backgrounds and to help us fill positions of long-term employees that have retired. So they'll be able to, to take us, take the city forward, um, with, with their unique skill sets. Um, also excited about, uh, to announce that we have made an offer and he has accepted to a, uh, chief building official. Uh, we'll be, we're working on getting a press release out that, uh, he should be here in about three weeks. He comes to us with about a half a page of impressive certifications and qualifications and then over 15 years of, of, um, uh, doing chief building official and, uh, community development in other communities. Um, I, finally, I, I, um, was so pleased, um, with, um, being able to work on the Fentanyl ordinance and those kinds of things to, to, uh, put something together to help with that situation. And then, um, also the good and welfare from the last meeting where, uh, uh, Ms. Jackson was able to bring something to get moving forward. We were able to get legal staff to, uh, to, uh, do some great research on that and find a creative way to maybe, uh, help solve her, her problem. And, uh, so I just wanted to say I appreciated how everybody handled that and that's the way the process should work. And, uh, was pleased to be a part of, of, um, seeing that work out to help her solve that problem. That's all I have to say.
All right. Well, move along to the good and welfare portion of our agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, we now arrive at the good and welfare section of our agenda. Before we begin, I'd like to remind everyone of the framework for this segment. Each speaker is requested to step forward, clearly state their name and address. It will be allotted three minutes to present their statement. Please note, this is not a session for dialogue or debate with the council nor is it a period for question answering. It is a time for you to make your voice heard, for us to listen, and your statements to be entered into the permanent public record. We ask that all remarks be kept respectful and pertinent to community matters. So with that, we'll go and open up the floor.
Renee Vance, 19813, Tangle Look. Um, this coming Sunday, we have got the quarterly dinner at our senior center on Sunday, 11:01. It is the fried pork tenderloin, mashed potatoes, green beans, good dinner. Uh, also, on another item, I have seen an awful lot of ads online that Pettis County's going green. Now, I know I've sat in the meeting and was assured that we were not, there was no money in recycling. So, is, is that a fallacy? Or do you know anything about recycling in Pettis County? I'm getting questions from Marshall about it because they're seeing it as a wealth. And I hadn't heard anything, so just a concern.
Okay. Thank you, Mr..
645 State Fair Boulevard, and although Tina touched on it already, um, I just want to, uh, again emphasize the invitation, which is open to the public, uh, from the Pettis County NAACP, the Sedalia Businesswomen, and Buffalo Regional Hospital, Health Center, as we honor, uh, community activist and female trailblazer, Loretta Emerson. Um, there will be an unveiling of a portrait, uh, that will hang in the hall there and a plaque below it telling of her achievements. And for our younger generation that may not know who she is, uh, she's an important part of Sedalia's history. And if you could make it, that would be a, a great lesson for you to learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wanting.
Hi, my name is Janet Mivansky. I live at 723 East Fifth Street. Um, I would like for you all to consider a five-minute time for us to be up here speaking instead of three minutes. I mean, sometimes we have a lot more to say and we're cut off in three minutes. We sit here through the whole meetings and we listen to everything that you all say. We're not rude, we're respectful. And we would like just a couple extra minutes added on to our time to speak. Um, there's a couple of other things. Um, there was a stop sign moved at Fifth and Montgomery. You all opened that street up all the way from Hancock to Engineer. It's like a Speedway now. Um, people, a lot of people don't drive the speed limit. They come flying down through there. They know, they don't have to stop till they get to Engineer. So, I mean, that's a big safety issue there. Um, maybe you consider a four-way stop at Montgomery and Fifth Street or something. You know, it's a couple blocks each way to, to slow down some traffic for us. A lot of times I put my car in the street instead of my driveway because they have to dodge the cars then. They have to slow down. Um, another thing is, um, we're wondering when we're up here talking if you all are really listening to us. Um, I had emailed Tina back and forth. She's my ward councilman. And we would like to do, um, a town hall meeting with her for our ward. Um, I never got a, a total answer back from you and that's been a while. So I'm wondering where that's at. I mean, is that possible that we could sit down and talk to you? Um, a lot of people in our ward, I mean, some, some people, we feel like some people are targeted. Some people are- people are harassed. There's other people in our neighborhoods that clearly need violations that are not getting them. I mean, it's trashy and what can I do? Can I go over there and put a note on my neighbor's door and tell him, hey, Tuesday's trash day, take your trash out. Don't pile it up here on top of your trash can or have a bunch of stuff sitting around. There's just other things, like dogs running loose and people wandering all hours of the night. I mean, I know you have the survey going around for safer streets for Sedalia. I think you guys would be surprised how many people are wandering around these streets in the middle of the night. I mean, it's crazy. I lived in a little town in Montot County, I was on city council, and we prevented that. We prevented all the people from being out wandering around at night because we pushed the time for the younger generations to be in for curfew. You know, if they had people that they were suspicious of driving with drugs or, you know, their vehicles looked like they were druggies or whatever, they would just say that they were shopping a suspicious vehicle or suspicious person. This person could be walking down the sidewalk and if they felt like they were into drugs or whatever, and I'm telling you what, the sheriff of Montot County, he doesn't put up with this.
Your time has expired, Mr. Allen.
What?
Your time has expired.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'm Kevin Loogen, 408 West 22nd Street. I just want to echo her concerns about traffic on Broadway and a different part though. In particular, former Mayor Hawkins, he's a frequent visitor to the community center for lunch and everything, and he often takes his, I mean, he has to use his cart to cross Broadway. I believe it's around Warren or Beacon or something. There's just a lot of concern seeing the speed of those cars and the fact there isn't another stoplight, I believe, until Grand. That, again, there's just a lot of concern that, you know, he's done a great job thus far, but my worry is that there might be a car that goes way too fast and he might misjudge it one day, and I'd hate to see something happen to him. Again, if there could be some analysis or somebody looking at the traffic flow and the rate of speed, especially between Grand and 65 or limit, that would be, again, just would be great if we could just make sure something doesn't happen to him or some other people down the road.
Sir, if we could get your name and address for our record?
Sure. Kevin Loogen, 408 West 22nd Street.
Anyone else? Okay, I will go ahead and, no more, second, move to closed door.
Yeah, motion move to closed or second, Legal Vice Real Estate and Negotiated Contracts.
I have a motion to second, move to closed door. Do I have any council discussion regarding that? Have you heard none, roll call please?
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yep.
Cross? Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
This conference will now be recorded.
I am freezing. I was freezing in here the entire council session.
It is cold.
Isn't it wonderful?
What do you do, drink a two? Because I'm thirsty.
Well, yours coat and tie, chubby, it's nice.
Hiller brought me, what's the bottle called? He brought me a bunch of sunglasses for the lifeguards. Does it have UV protection? You look cool, man.
Oh, my.
I was just hoping that they, they'd be good extras, you know, extra. I'll be out the next company. But, you know, that's kind of how we, uh-
It's not arid time when you're, I mean-
Huh?
The sun always shine when you're cool.
Got a pretty good summer for it.
They say it does very well.
That's a pretty good stage, you ever heard of that?
Yeah.
Going there, that's their like, up higher, you don't want to ever go down without him.
I'm never gonna, I'm really gonna say no.
What? Guess I'm stuck in here. You have music on video, I guess. You're working for me, what's your worst one for getting stuck in here? You don't mind it?
That's him, yeah?
Save that for the hour.
Okay, so, I'll now entertain a motion to second to return to the regular meeting. I have a motion to second, do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please?
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yep.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yep.
Okay, we have two ordinances to approve. The first one, I will go ahead and call for the reading of Bill 2024-154.
Bill number 2024-154. An ordinance approving a special warranty deed for the sale of property commonly known as 404 East Second Street in the City of Soudalia, Missouri to Fresnel Investments Incorporated and Missouri Corporation.
Second reading. Second. I have a motion to second for second reading, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, all those are favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-154. An ordinance approving a special warranty deed for the sale of property commonly known as 404 East Second Street in the City of Soudalia, Missouri to Fresnel Investments Incorporated and Missouri Corporation.
Final passage.
Second. I have a motion to second for the final passage of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, roll call please?
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes. The next ordinance I'm going to call, or bill I'm going to call reading for is Bill number 2024-155.
Bill number 2024-155. An ordinance approving a quick claim deed for the sale of properties commonly known as 421 North O Sage Avenue and 423 North O Sage Avenue from the City of Soudalia, Missouri to Marla Deanne Green.
Second reading. Second. I have a motion to second for second reading of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, all those are favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-155. An ordinance approving a quick claim deed for the sale of properties commonly known as 421 North O Sage Avenue and 423 North O Sage Avenue from the City of Soudalia, Missouri to Marla Deanne Green.
Final passage.
Second. I have a motion to second for the final passage of this bill, do I have any council discussion? Have you heard none, roll call please?
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yep.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.